May I like to call this meeting to order? Rojo.
Mr. Dangler?
Cheers.
Mr. Viera will be absent this evening. Dr. Vogt?
Here.
Dr. Sully?
Here.
Mrs. Wittes?
Here.
And I hereby certify that this meeting has been published in the newspaper in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and posted as required by law.
Thank you. The first item is the No-Knock Ordinance. And we had gotten an email requesting us to visit this. And Kathy said she has this in her town.
I do. It's wonderful.
Would you like to talk about it?
We just went down to Town Hall, put our name on a registry. They gave us a sticker, put it on our door, and it has deterred everyone from knocking on my door. I put out an email to some clerks. They sent me a few samples, you know, of what they have. Mostly every town has a clerk's office maintain the list and give out the stickers. Some municipalities have the police department do it, and they maintain a list. And when someone wants to solicit and get a license for that, they'll give them a copy of the list and say, "Don't knock on those doors," which I think is probably a little bit more difficult. I think the sticker would be a good idea, but it works great in brick. I love it.
Do you have any thoughts on it, the No-Knock Ordinance?
I don't think we should restrict it. I don't think we should say political parties or what's the other one?
West Long Branch does restrict.
Well, you can't, right? You can't limit political speech. So you wouldn't be able to, even if you had one, it wouldn't apply to people who are running for office.
There you go.
That's why they all have that provision, because you can't. And that, by the way, that doesn't just apply to people who are running for office, you know. If the League of Conservation Voters, for instance, comes and they go around there, you can't restrict them either. It's really strictly commercial.
And what is the point of no-knock?
It's strictly for commercial. It's to stop the people from knocking on your door and saying, "Do you want a new roof?" It's those kind of things. It's strictly commercial, because you can't restrict political speech.
I was speaking to someone the other day, and they said, like Verizon came to their door like three or four times, and she asked them not to come to their door. And, you know, they just continued to do it.
What did they want? I've never had an animal.
Well, I know, they did it to my mother. They came and the guy would not leave her house until she changed from Comcast to her car.
Right.
Really?
Yeah, they just, yeah, that's, and there's a lot of, it's really just, you're really looking to stop vendors from doing it, right?
Yeah.
I think you're really looking to stop the commercial part of it.
Yeah.
But you can't stop, you know, religious organizations either. You can't stop that.
Right, right.
That's why the exemptions are there, right?
Right.
So any questions about it?
I think it's a good idea. And just from your experience, you're saying that it's, that it's working well. My only thought was to keep the registry online so that you can keep it current, because once you print it out, you know, half hour later, the printed version can be out of date. So to have the registry...
Usually what they do is they go to the clerk's office, they put their name on a registry, and they get a sticker. That's how it works. And then I would always have an updated list.
Oh, okay.
You know? And then if they want to be removed, they would have to call, it says, in a bunch of the other ordinances from other towns, but...
Right, yeah. So maybe we could sticker and put it on their...
And by the way, I understand the reality of Oprah world, which is, then people will Oprah the No-Knock list and then mail people, which is what happens.
Oh.
Right. Anytime you create a mailing list, it, then people, people Oprah it, right?
Yeah.
It's just, just the nature of it. And it's a public document. Well, and of course, it has to be a public document, because you want to give it to people who are, so that they know.
Yeah. So what would be the next steps for here, you know, for example, with things like, there was one of them that I think you had to pay $5 for the sticker, which...
Some towns charge, some towns don't.
I don't, I don't think we should charge them.
No, I don't either.
Yeah, yeah.
Bill, would you want to charge?
No, we would not.
Yeah. And, and then the other thing, what would the fines be?
Usually they're between $50 and $100 in the ordinances that I've had.
Yeah. $50 and $100?
$50 to $100, yeah.
Yeah.
Uninvited soliciting.
For a house?
I don't know how Mr. Reno would set it up.
Say that again?
For a house. Like if they knock on...
No, I think it is.
Right.
No, it is. It is.
Yeah.
No, it absolutely is.
So as a resident, we would just call and say, JCP&amp;L, alternative people, whoever they are.
Right.
Knock on my door.
Yeah.
And then the city send them a bill.
Yep.
You'd have to issue somebody a summons. It would be important.
You'd have to issue them a summons. Yeah.
Right, but we, as a resident, I can, I would just have to call, call the city.
You'd have to call, yes, yes.
So we would have instructions on our website for those who decide to participate in the No-Knock Ordinance as to what steps they would follow in the event that someone knocks on their door?
And I assume that by, by being online, maybe what you were suggesting, which I think is a good idea, to be able to sign up online and then we'll mail you your statement.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That, and also, you know, your list stays kind of current, right, to the...
Right.
So would you like to move forward with this? Would you take like the consensus?
I would like to move forward and have the fine, if I can, the first offense, $100, second one, $200.
I would say at a minimum, because I think it really, I think it's really bothersome, which is the reason why we want to do it. And I think we need to make the fines significant enough that they're really determined.
Same thing, you agree?
Yeah.
I do.
Okay. So I, so we'd like to move forward and, you know, fines would be $100 to $200.
Okay. Thank you. Per, per door, per household, per ha, per...
Yeah, per violation.
Yeah.
Yeah, per violation.
Okay.
Okay. Then, thank you. The next, I...
So, so, so what's going to happen with that, then? Who's going to do it?
Kathy and I will put an ordinance together, and then we'll, we'll try to get it together in the next week or so, and we'll try to get it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay, good.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is board updates. Does anyone have anything to update us on?
Um, so I attend the Cable Commission, and one of the things that we're talking about there is restoring the TV program for the mayor. And then also...
Let's call up something else, okay? We'll call up Community Connections.
Okay.
All right?
Okay, yeah. And then also not, not only the mayor's program, however that gets started back up again, but also a monthly TV program for the HERS Task Force. That would probably be something along the lines of, you know, if you look at the half hour, maybe the, the first 15 minutes would be spotlighting different service providers and interviewing them. And then second 15 minutes or so would be a discussion on an important, you know, opioid topic, something like that. So that's generally what we're thinking about now. And, you know, we're looking to get that started, really, as soon as we can. So those discussions are, are moving along.
Are they gonna, where are they going to televise this?
Well, those are the things we need to figure out. You have some ideas or you have some thoughts?
You know, I know we always have equipment, and we also have, you know, we always want that shared services, so maybe we need to...
That's a good idea, yeah.
You know, talk to Dr. Salvatore and see if there's some way we can maybe move their comment in their, you know, their televised form, so...
Yeah.
And is it only going to be limited to the HERS program, or are they going to open up to other ordinances?
Well, you know, there are two things that we're talking about.
Okay.
So one is kind of HERS specifically.
Okay.
Just because that, that's what the conversation was focused around.
Mm-hmm.
And the other is the mayor's program.
Okay, right, okay.
Which, of course, can include everything.
Can include everything, okay.
Yeah. So the, so those are the two things that, that we're talking about right now. But the whole shared services piece, and of course Jessica's on the Cable Commission, so, so that, that would be good. So, let me see, as far as the, and we actually didn't have a meeting this month because we didn't have a forum.
Oh, okay.
So this was a conversation that happened with Kevin before the, the meeting, and that's what we're working on, but we didn't have a formal meeting.
Okay. Who, who notifies the committee, the meetings, like, is anybody reminding people? Listen, we all get busy, and maybe we should have someone do that.
Is that...
It should be on the calendar.
Yes.
Yeah, but that meeting reminder thing is always helpful for all of our meetings, for all the board meetings.
Yeah. I guess my question would be, are they still going to charge the $7.50 to do the interviews?
I know, that's, that's all the stuff that we're talking about.
Okay.
And, and, and actually, I was talking with the mayor who said, because I had written an, an email to Lou saying if we're going to do something, and if we're going to contract with someone, does that need to go out to bid?
Well, the answer is in May, and that, that's why I, I kind of paused, because I know the mayor said he was going to talk to you, so I didn't know what it is exactly you were going to do. Who, who is this organization? Are they a private organization?
For the opioid?
No, you said you wanted a contract with somebody. I assume you're talking about contracting with the people who are doing the...
Someone who just said, "I can do that. I produce TV programs." You know, so, so we just started a conversation, but there are a lot of people who produce TV programs, so...
And the schools probably can do it for free.
Yeah.
So I think we should look into that first.
Yeah, so...
Our school system.
Our school system.
Yeah, not, not mama.
Right, right.
No, it's our school system.
Yeah. So, so we'll follow that track first, that recommendation first, and then see where it takes us, and then include the mayor in those conversations and everything. So...
So I had, if I can just jump in, I had, you know, Anita had reached out to me and Lou, and basically, we're all saying the same thing, which was, you know, that's, that's fine, but let's, you know, let's look a little further. We have Jessica, who's actually on the Cable Commission, and like you said, the school has a, has a modern studio, and, you know, there's some other possibilities I think we could look into, too. Because I believe, you know, in the past, those production costs, you know, have eaten up a lot of their overall budget, which I think Anita, what, is about $22,000, if I'm not mistaken?
Right, yep. And I'm thinking it was in the range of like $7.50 per program?
That's what it was.
Yeah, I mean, I think, if I'm not mistaken, I think the last time they were doing the mayor's program was like $1,250 a show, which I thought was pretty, pretty expensive.
Yeah.
And, you know, even $7.50, like I said, if it's, as Rose or Mary, Dr. Sully pointed out, if we can work something out, which I think we should be able to, frankly, with, with the people we have there now.
Yeah.
To see what we can do.
And it'd be good to get the students involved, too.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Because, you know, they're learning about government, and, you know, and I know Jessica involves them with all different types of, you know, video recordings and things like that. So I think, I think this is like, would be a great start.
Yeah, good.
Start our school system.
Good, good. Okay, so, so I'll follow up in that direction with this and keep you posted. And then the other thing is just UEZ, and Jake, maybe I'm going to turn, turn to you. One of the things that's going to be coming up in not the May, but the June meeting, right, was the idea of kind of brainstorming some, some possible projects that could be funded if UEZ funding comes through. I don't know, so you, you want to give a little bit?
It's pretty much it.
Okay.
We will try to kick the next meeting to just come up with some ideas. We've got lots of projects and possibilities.
Yeah.
So the funding is restored, we'll be later on.
Yep, yeah. So there's a, there's a good, good energy going around with those discussions, and that'll be a good meeting in, in June to talk about.
Would, would any, like, a project be something like where we would help clean up storefronts and things like that along Broadway and wherever they need to be cleaned up? Is that something that's...
Yeah, eligible activities would be anything that can attract people into business or commercial districts and promote business revenues, or can attract people who leave in the past, supported concerts like in West End or in North Broadway. We've done infrastructure projects, we've done parks, we built the bandshells that you presently see in the city hall with UEZ funds.
Oh, okay.
So anything that can bring people into a business or commercial district, it's an eligible activity.
So facades and streetscapes.
Yeah, it's definitely eligible, right?
That'd be great.
Because I would like to look into something like that.
Signage.
Yeah, signage, all those.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I think we need to do a little cleaning up.
Yeah. Well, one of the things that Jake said is as we get closer and we're, it's, we know a little, with a little bit more certainty of if the funding is going to come through or not, you know, that we would make the eligibility guidelines, you know, let, let people know about that, and then just start to develop a list from our conversations with people. And then that meeting will be actually the committee getting together to look at the list. I don't know necessarily to prioritize it. I don't know if we need to do that yet, but at least we'll have the list ready to go if we, when we know what the funding will be.
Okay, great.
Yeah, so that was good.
Thank you. Jake?
Jake, did the city utilize the facade grants from the county? Did they have much participation?
We, we had our own UEZ facade program.
You had your own, okay.
The state changed the rules on this, though. They, they made the businesses use prevailing wages and David's payment to match. And many of the businesses didn't want to do that, so the state sort of stopped their own facade program.
Wow. Because the, because the county one, it was entirely funded through the program, right? Up to $1,850, and I don't think there was any match either.
Okay, if there's no match, then that's not a problem.
Yeah.
The state wanted David's payment proof to match, and a lot of the businesses just dropped out.
Questions, you gentlemen? The prevailing wage, because $15 an hour?
No, it's a scale based on the job description.
Okay, so the, the businesses...
No, it's not, it's not, it's not meaning minimum wage. It's, it's prevailing wage, like we require a contractor that does a municipal project to pay prevailing wage. It's really closer to what, you know, for our laborer or our electrician or plumber, it's closer to what the, what union wage is. That's why it's, right, Jake, that's, that's the issue.
So that has, that's not, has nothing to do with the improvement of the businesses, the same Broadway? That's two different, two different...
I'm not sure of the question, Mr. Dangler.
We're talking, talking about, the reason I'm asking is because through UEZ funding, we discussed the improvement of the businesses, the commercial businesses, I'll just say Broadway for right now. And if they...
The state does not mandate that we use prevailing wages for the UEZ. At least they have not up to date.
Right.
Some of the other programs, City of G, they do. For, there's a limit, you know, sometimes there's a, there might be a specific amount, it might be over $10,000, $15,000, and then you have to bring in prevailing wages. The state, when we had UEZ funding, they did not force cities to use or municipalities to use prevailing wages when we had projects, until, until at the end of the program. And then that's why a lot of the, as I said, facade program, we didn't name the businesses on North Broadway. And then when they insisted that the merchants match it with the previous prevailing wages, we didn't get merchants assigned. They said, oh, you know, which means they would have to hire people, and it's pretty rough on small businesses to, to use prevailing wages as well. But they're about to stay a hand in there.
And any work that we do ourselves, we would have prevailing wages. That's just the public contracts law.
Okay, thank you. Not all of them.
Thank you.
And just one other thing that, that we talked about UEZ was the update on Shop Long Branch.
Yes.
So you wanted to do it?
Yeah, we've started to canvass. We did formulate a list in the last meeting. And the good news is that the first stop we made, we did get assigned. So Roberto went out with Dan. Dan represents the property company there. And we did get assigned them, so they did, I think they only went to three places, but... So there are more canvassing scheduled in the future, so we hope to go through that entire list, and then some, so we'll keep working on it.
Okay. And then if anyone, I think I, we spoke about this, if they want more information, they can notify you, email you, and you can put them, you know...
Yeah, we ran out of those brochures that they had, so they did send me a digital copy of it. Dan said he would bring more of the physical copies, but we can print them out to lead with the merchants. So once we get like up to 15 or so signed up, that's when we can then print the cards and start the program.
Oh, perfect. Great. Thank you. Mr. Dangler, do you have any updates?
Yes, a couple. In regards to Department of Public Works, just want to say that the cleaning of Long Branch seems to be working. Happy to note, I guess, one of the people during the election, one of the biggest complaints, like every day was how dirty the city was. He just happened to get a citation because he put mattress out without putting plastic on. So he called to complain, but he also said he's not really complaining, because this is what he asked for. So obviously, they would have picked it up in a timely fashion, but they couldn't, because he didn't obey what you were, he said. So if that works, that's good. And again, I know I commended the Department of Public Works, but they are making a pretty good effort in regards to keeping our city clean. There's an issue with the police department, not in regards to conduct or anything, but we have a gentleman, lives on Cedar Avenue, which I did make a couple calls about. He is harassing and calling names to one of the residents. He's, has a mental issue, but she's, the woman is a single parent, and the kids get home before her, because she's working. So if you can imagine being, you know, called a young word and so on, it could become ugly. So we did speak to Jason. He did send an officer out there twice, and Jason, Chief Littlebuck, witnessed it himself. But we don't really know what to do, but the young lady does need some help. Having her move is not the answer. She's not the one causing the problem, so I don't know. But they did, you know, respond right away, but we just need to figure out how we can help. Help the gentleman who needs the help, you know, someone with mental issue. We can't make them get help, but the safety of the other people in that area, that is an issue. And the last thing, in regards to code enforcement, I did speak to, need to speak to Nick in regards to this, but I spoke to Officer Shirley, and I spoke to code enforcement, the red, the red house slash building coming in on Julyan Avenue. That is an eyesore for the city of Long Branch. It's been, been that way for years.
Yeah.
So they did say that they were looking to who to contact, because that needs to be demolished. Whatever we need to do, we can get that paid care, because that's the first thing you see once you, really, once you enter Long Branch, and it's just, it just gets worse.
As long as they pay the taxes, you can't do much about it.
We need to figure out something. I don't know what.
Yeah.
Even if we, you know, put a nice, very nice fence around all of that, it's just, it's just, it's just trouble.
It is. It's an eyesore.
But, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Sully?
The mayor, myself, and the advisory board of the senior center met, because there was a new program that was instituted, and some of the members of the advisory board were very much against it. So I said, "Let's have a meeting," and we did. And I think they understand the program. What it was, was to give free exercise, four exercise times a month free. The last I heard, the director had given out 45 cards. I don't know how many have been, how many people have actually used it, and we won't know until the end of the month. But there was a lot of friction within the advisory board, because they didn't exactly understand the purpose and why. I'm anxious to see come the second or third of May, to see how well we did, because it usually costs $3 an exercise class for an hour with a qualified or professional instructor. And they get, I believe, between $45, $50 an hour. So you figure how many people have, have to come in order to make up that, and if the money isn't made up, then the advisory board has to put the money in. So I'm really anxious to see how well, how many people actually utilized the free exercise program.
If I might, Councilman, I spoke to Pat this afternoon, just so happens...
Okay.
The count of, the number of cards issued is 47, and she said so far 14 out of that 47 have not redeemed a card. So you've got 30, with the new mayor, 33 that have actually utilized the card.
Really?
Yeah, out of the 47.
Wow.
So 14 people have picked up the card but have not used it towards a program yet.
So what was it?
47 have taken the card, and 14 of that 47 have not used it at all yet. So you've got 33 people that have actually utilized it.
Okay.
But I don't know the count for how many programs, how many visits they've had.
Let's see how much, add it up.
Yep.
That's close to $300, $400.
Yeah. But that's where they're at.
We'll see how it goes.
Yeah.
John, are you listening?
I am.
Okay.
So, you know, I...
Go ahead.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. No, that's fine. So in other words, George, if I'm doing my math here, if 33 people have used it for one class, you're talking about, you know, about $100, and if they've utilized all four classes, you're talking about $400, correct?
Yep, in that neighborhood, yes.
Yep.
Okay.
So I think the program itself was successful, except for the financial end. We got more people in to take exercise, but we don't know how long, whether they'll come back or not. You know, this was a, well, the program is supposed to go on until, for three months, and then we're going to reevaluate it. I'm glad to see that it was utilized, though.
Yeah.
That's great.
That's all I have.
And I have no updates at this time. I will, though, for, do you want me to say something?
No, no, no. I, I, I just want to add one more thing.
Oh, sure. Can I have your turn? Take my turn.
I just saw the city council board. I was just thinking of the board updates. I just want to really recognize some of our, our residents. And this was a program that we did, oh, gosh, I'm going to say it was like three, three weeks ago. And it was a program that Brookdale sponsored, which you were there. And it was called the Immigrant Experience. And it has to do with a college-wide program that Brookdale does, where everybody reads the same book on a specific topic, and then you have discussions about it. And we, in Long Branch, for the first time, hosted a session.[1693.23] It's called the Global Read. And this year, the Global Read focused on the immigrant experience. And the whole idea was to have our students kind of talk about their story and, you know, bring forward what are some of the challenges that the immigrant communities face in Long Branch and all over. So it was a very successful and informative program. But more important, well, maybe not more important, but equally important is our students, our Long Branch students who participated in the program are gonna be, are gonna receive an award tomorrow night at Brookdale. It's called the Global Citizenship Award. And it's to recognize, you know, their part in that program. And what I wanna say is, you know, their courage to come forward and tell their story. And it was all in the context of how can the city and how can the college learn more about the challenges that our immigrant communities face every single day? And what can we, you know, do to help that? So the fact that our students are being recognized, and one of our officers is Captain Silberio.
Yes.
Yeah, is joining us, and he also is gonna get a certificate, you know, an award for his participation, which was...
Yeah, he spoke that night about his experience.
Yeah, it was terrific, because it was just really very spontaneous, very heartfelt, very articulate, very passionate about, you know, the challenges that immigrants face. Let me tell you what I think was the most powerful moment, or one of the most powerful moments of the whole session, was we had a young girl, Luciana Silva, had set this up. And we did different little skits to kind of really bring alive what people need to deal with, you know, every day. And so this little girl, she was all a ten-years-old, that was all of it. Her name is Anna. And she was in a skit, which was intended to show the challenges that our immigrant, our immigrant residents deal with in, with healthcare. And the situation was that they were in a, in a hospital, and the doctor had, and meeting there was the doctor, Anna, and her grandmother. And the doctor had just made a diagnosis that the grandmother had terminal cancer and was, you know, had weeks, if even that, to live. And of course, the grandmother doesn't understand English, you know. And so it was the, you know, put upon this little ten-year-old girl, you know, I get chills every time I think of this, you know, to say to her, you know, beloved grandmother, you have cancer, you're probably not gonna live very much longer. But it's the impact of this is what happens every day. You know, this is what some of our kids, you know, need to deal with. So she is being honored, and I wanna make sure we get a picture of it.
So this session didn't just involve Brookdale students, encompassed other Long Branch students?
Yeah, what was wonderful was, it truly was a Brookdale, Long Branch, you know, joint effort. Our planning committee included Luciana, Tanya, David Perez, Vi Peters, I hope I'm not forgetting, Vigilio, and so we all put the program together, you know, with that. And just for the, little Anna was like so fascinated by Captain...
Yeah, I'm trying to, was that the one where they flipped, basically flipped the script, where it was, I can't remember if that one or another one, where it was putting yourself in the position of an English-speaking person that doesn't understand Spanish and dealing with only Spanish, to basically give you the experience of a Spanish-speaking person. Everything is coming at you at a language you don't understand.
Yeah, yeah.
But I can't remember if it was that one, when they flipped it on.
I think it was the police.
Maybe it was a different one, yes.
Yeah, being stopped, you know, and you can't communicate with the police. But even, remember, we opened the program with Luciana welcoming everybody in Portuguese. You know, and I said, I wish I would have had a picture of everybody's face. It was like, you know, like, what's going on here, you know? So anyhow, the wonderful thing is that to, you know, just support our students and support our immigrant community, and that has actually started a small group of people that wants to continue to talk about the challenges for immigrant population movements.
I wonder if that's not something we can also incorporate into the cable commission at some point?
That would have been nice.
Ah, yeah, yeah. Good suggestion, okay. Yeah, but it'll be continuing, and we'll see how it evolves.
I agree, thank you.
I'd like to say one more thing. I forgot about the disability committee.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah. And I think I came in the middle of it, so you can pick up where I didn't get everything.
Okay.
But they are gonna have a, I don't want to say groundbreaking, but a ribbon cutting. Ribbon cutting in June.
Mm-hmm.
For rockers.
June eighth or June tenth, whatever is the eighth, yeah.
For the rockers, for the handicapped.
Yes, mm-hmm.
That you have before.
Yeah, yeah. So it'll be the opening of the ribbon cutting for North Bath Beach, which we are trying to, well, not trying to, which we are working to make as the most accessible beach among the beaches on, really, on the Jersey Shore. That's our goal, not just Long Branch, on the Jersey Shore. And so we've been working with the Disabilities Committee, motions, Judith Brown, Stan Zubo is as usual amazing self with everything that he did. And so we're actually gonna have Judith come to a meeting, so to give you all the details of...
That's gonna be on the twenty-fourth?
Uh, no, she's coming on the eighth. Judith is coming, she can make it on the eighth.
She can make it on the eighth?
Yeah, so she'll share all the details.
She'll be on our agenda, okay.
Yeah. And May eleventh, since that's coming up real soon, you know, Stan, on his, just on his own initiative, is doing a fishing trip with any of the, you know, clients at motions that want to go fishing with him for the full day, which is like incredible that he's doing this stuff. So a lot of good stuff is happening there.
Thank you.
I didn't want to forget it because I thought it was important.
Yeah.
Okay, the next item is review of regular meeting.
So Rose, if you don't mind, I can give you an update on the library.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It's okay. So I just wanted to just give you an update on the library. The, just very quickly, the basement is in basically the final stages of a complete and total renovation. So that ribbon cutting also should be sometime in May. It was scheduled for the middle of May, it might be delayed a week or so because of the HVAC system, but again, I think I've mentioned this before, you know, there's several meeting rooms, David Perez has his own room. There's a new, you know, high-tech theater that's gonna be in there. So that, like I said, is gonna be in the middle of May. On Monday, the library had an Earth Day celebration, which basically was a fun thing for the kids on the second floor. There's some new computer classes that are beginning on Monday, and a new Portuguese class on Saturdays. And all of this is part of this new campaign that Tanya is doing called the Campaign for Excellence. And so they're initiating a new dress code policy and some other things just to improve customer service and so forth in the library as well. I wanted to mention, just to pick up for a second on the accessibility beach that Anita and Mary Jane were talking about. It is June eighth, it's from ten-thirty to twelve-thirty. And I also wanted to notice, which is, you know, something we kind of talked about too. So Mimi Feliciano, who is the developer of South Beach, which is right where the beach will take place, donated, made a significant donation to the hard surface there to create that accessible beach there. So I wanted to thank her, and she'll be there on June eighth as well. So thanks for mentioning that. And then the other things I just wanted to pick up with Mary Jane said about the, about the senior passes. So again, you know, I think we discussed this during the budget season. The whole idea here was to give seniors an opportunity to have some free, some free classes. And so that's, that still is the goal, and you know, hopefully, as Mary Jane pointed out, there's gonna be a three-month trial. There was a little concern on part of the advisory board, and I'm glad that Mary Jane brought that to my attention, and we did meet with them. And so I think the bottom line is this is all gonna work out, and everybody should be happy with that. But, you know, the idea is that we'll see how it goes after three months, because, you know, we're hoping that more seniors will take the classes because they're free, get healthy, and wanna take more classes beyond the, you know, the few that are offered for free. So again, as she pointed out, and, you know, we'll see how that goes. And that's it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Rose, before we go to the agenda, on May seventh, the Monmouth County Municipal Alliance will be reading at the county. I'm going to attend the meeting so we can get some more information and see if we can...
Question.
Okay.
Get that up and running.
May seventh?
May seventh, yes.
Where?
It's actually at the Board of Social Services.
Okay.
Which is just so happy to be in my building, so.
Perfect. Thank you. Anything else? Next item, review of regular meeting agenda, are there any questions?
Yes, I have a question. Resolution, R. seventy-three nineteen, request of support for legislation increasing the funding for shore protection. We're just going to make a resolution and send it to our state legislature.
What was the number, seven-three?
Seventy-three nineteen.
Yeah, okay.
I'm not, did we get this from someplace? Somebody send us this resolution? Only because we're sending it to, we're sending it to Senator O'Scannan, Assemblywoman Hanlon, and Assemblywoman Serena Demasi, I thought maybe we wanted to send it to Senator Gopal.
Yeah.
The Assemblyman from, I'm assuming that this must have come from someplace in that legislative district.
I don't know who it was sent from, but I can make that change.
Yeah, you should change out these legislatures rather than legislatures or whatever.
So are we gonna...
You can leave it, I mean, we just corrected. Sure, just correct it. Is that, was that your question, Councilman?
Well, yes, just basically who are we sending it to?
It talks about the shoreline of Middletown, so those are their representatives. But that's the connection, how that must have come through. Well, that might be a typo, too. This is protecting the shoreline attached to the Middletown, every other shore community. So that's the... Yeah, so I think we want to change that, obviously the skip from Middletown.
Yeah, but...
So it should say, it should say Long Branch, right?
I'm sending a letter to the legislators in twelfth district, I think that's the twelfth district, thirteenth, but we're not...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so in other words, we have to correct this to, in the last whereas, to put the city of Long Branch in, and we have to correct the final, be it resolved, to indicate our legislators.
I'll take care of that.
And we'll send it out that way.
So when we read it tonight, when we say we're necessarily corrected, or we just read it?
Yes, yes.
Anything else? Okay. I need a motion to adopt the resolution, go into executive session for the quality of affordable housing.
So moved.
Second.
Throw票?
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Ms. Doctor Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Sally?
Yes.
Mrs. Weddell?
Yes.